Okay, ladies and gentlemen, can we stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and good evening, everyone. We're going to start off with our reports to the committees, and first up are our student representatives. Come on down. Go right ahead.
Good evening, Monroe Board of Education. I hope you're having a terrific Tuesday following the four-day weekend for a midwinter break. Massey Robotics Teams 4478A and 4478M compete in Ohio this weekend, battling against difficult opponents in preparation for the Southern New England Regionals event next Monday and Tuesday. High-placing teams have a chance to qualify for the world's competition. Good luck, Massey Robotics.
Last week, girls' basketball faced New Fairfield in the first round of SWCs and lost. Friday, boys' basketball will take on Bonnell away for their first round. Meanwhile, boys' ice hockey will face North Branford in their last regular-season game on Saturday. Additionally, Massey Color Guard placed first this weekend at their competition at West Hill. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you very much.
If you all saw too, I sent out, forwarded an email from Bill McDonough for robotics. Massey is actually helping host the regional competition at Total Mortgage Arena this Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, and Bill put an invite there if anyone wants to come. There's some activity Sunday, and then the actual competitions start Monday and Tuesday, with opening ceremonies, I think, at 8:30 Monday morning.
That's good, and we wish him well. Any board members have any committee reports at all? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to move to public participation. Is April here? April, come on up, please. All right, if you can state your name and address for the record, and then go ahead.
So my name is April Mignon, and my address is 48 Crestwood Road. I wanted to discuss a matter that is of great concern to me regarding our school district's use of the Teachers College Units of Study Program for teaching reading. Families with young children moved to Monroe because of its reputation for good schools. It is disappointing to find out that the school system that I trusted to educate my child is not teaching reading using evidence-based practices. The district's decision to still use Teachers College is very disheartening. Monroe is still using a program that has been proven by neuroscientists that it doesn't teach the way the brain reads words. Lucy Hawkins, the creator of TC, deliberately ignored the science for political and financial reasons. She made millions of dollars off of harming kids in this country, and yet Monroe still chooses to support her in Teachers College. As both a reading specialist and a kindergarten teacher who cares deeply about literacy and reading, I have witnessed the struggles that my own son Dante, who is in kindergarten, faces with reading. Despite reading with him at home, he still struggles to sound out simple words like "cat" and "hot." Instead, he guesses and memorizes words, making very little connections to the letters and sounds. Predictable texts were sent home at the very beginning of school. These are books filled with hard words for beginning readers to decode, like words like "eat," "paint," "house," "computers," "cookies," and "french fries." Using these texts with beginning readers creates bad reading habits. As an educator, I have witnessed the educational benefits of using programs that are truly aligned to the science of reading, such as foundations. My kindergarten students have shown huge growth in their reading abilities, and this is due to the curriculum that I am using. Based upon my DIBELS mid-year and foundations assessments, I have zero students receiving reading support. I want these results for the kids in Monroe and for my own son. Reading is the foundation to everything in our lives. Being able to read well is a civil right, and as educators, it is our responsibility to provide our children with the best curriculum possible, grounded in evidence-based practices. I urge Monroe to adopt a phonics and reading program aligned with the science of reading to ensure that all children, including my own, thrive. The concerns about the Teachers College Units of Study Program for teaching reading in our school district are as follows. Lack of explicit instruction. One concern is that kindergarteners have not been explicitly taught spelling patterns. It is unfair to give kids words to read when they have not been taught those phonics and decoding skills. Teachers College still uses low-level predictable texts, which my son received at the beginning of the school year. These simple repetitive sentences and pictures force a beginning reader to orchestrate cues for meaning in texts when confronted with words he or she can't decode. The use of these kinds of texts can lead to confusion and mixed messages to memorize snap words and mixed messages in their reading development. Teaching beginning readers in kindergarten to memorize snap words before teaching them their letter-sound knowledge verse. There is not enough explicit instruction with showing learners that connections, that the connections between sounds and letters. Monroe's schools are still using F&amp;P assessments, which assesses kids on using the three-queuing system. Effectiveness of the program. The fact that our district has to send the program to be examined and tweaked by specialists implies that it may not be the most effective approach. This raises doubts about its ability to provide evidence-based reading instruction. I am deeply concerned that the professionals and experts are setting our beginning readers up for failure because of instructional programs and materials that are being provided by the district. Instructional practices and the Teachers College Units of Study that Monroe is currently using is not effective in teaching kids how to read and is not one of the Connecticut-approved reading programs. Every minute counts for every child every second of the day, and a district that chooses to ignore the science of reading is violating our kids' right to learn how to read. How children are taught to read will determine how successful of a reader they will become and prevent potential reading difficulties. Let's set our kids' reading development on the right path from the very beginning. Thank you for taking the time to consider this important matter.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Is there anyone else for public participation? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on. Joe, report of the chairman, we have recognition of 2024 National Merit finalists and commended students.
We do. I'll ask Steve actually to come up and introduce our students, and maybe we can bring them here.
Steve, sure. Want to bring these over?
Yep. So commended students, just to clarify for everyone, are students that fell into the top 5% of those who took the test nationally, so roughly 50,000 of the 1.5 or 6 million kids who took it across the nation. They scored at a level that was in the top 5%.
This is the National Merit Squad.
This is the, yeah, this is the, yes, the National Merit Scholarship qualifying test that they took. So we had, I believe it was six, six students that came in as, or sorry, five students who came in as commended students. Sawyer Carlson. Lauren Chifty. Brian Giudano. Arini Gosakonda. And I don't see Brayden, did Brayden come in? Brayden Rankavensky. So then from there, you go to a higher-tier level of student, a semifinalist, which would be the top 2%, roughly, and we had four of those students, they're standing here, and all four of these students have also moved on to be finalists as well, which means they are in the top 15,000 in the nation, about half of which will be getting scholarships. So we don't, we won't know about scholarships for another month or so, but these, all four of these students are eligible for those. Vuvan Hospit. Ben Mondano. Anish Sharma. Did you get everybody?
You're in.
That's excellent work. All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does any board member have any questions on the minutes that were posted in our packet? No? Any questions on the warrants? Jeff?
Just one question on the, the Arbiter Sport One, the $18,000, is that a prepayment for?
That funds the, our account for the spring sports.
Okay, so that takes care of the officials that we're not paying for?
Correct.
And if, in the event that there's games that are taken away or officials aren't even?
The money will either stay in there, or we can pull it back.
Okay.
Any other questions on the warrants? No, thanks, Jeff. Any questions on the wires?
I did have one, I'm just trying to pull it back up on the transportation line.
Ask Ron, yeah.
Ron, there was one that was like $1,700, $1,800 for hockey. Was that multiple buses? Because that was, kind of stood out.
Yeah, which, which page is that?
Yeah, it was transportation, I think February 1st.
Page two?
Yeah, page two.
About the three now.
The...
1777?
It just stood out.
Give me a second.
It's much larger than all the others.
Right, that's why.
Yeah, that's what flagged, you know, caught my attention to it.
Mr. Chairman, while they're looking it up, can we segue to see if, Joe, is there any improvement on transportation?
Yes, actually, I talked to Steve, and he said... Also, it's been satisfying a lot more of our requests. Ron, you can't find that angry in your laptop.
No, that's all right, I'm just trying to match up the invoice.
So yes, it's going to be in there. We also brought on another company as a vendor that, the school buses, so the need for coach would go down.
Waiting for the bill to...
You need a project cut to keep out Ron's wifi.
Yeah, what are you going to do?
He's got to dig into the universe to find us.
It's multiple, yeah, it's multiple, you know, buses, multiple days, so...
Yeah. You know, as a number on this list, so, okay.
So it was multiple buses that added to that total, Ron? Is that what you're...
Probably one check to the company for...
Versus one bus run, right?
Yeah, so the, the entire, that entire invoice was just shy of $4,300, and the allocation to hockey was the 1777, and it was just, yeah, it was multiple... I mean, if you want, I can send you a copy of the invoice.
No, that's right, that's right. No, thanks for clarifying.
So it was actually for the event, or is it a timing issue? Did we just get double billed? It was two buses?
No, they, they just, you know, the, the invoice was for multiple...
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
They didn't, they don't, they don't invoice us per Ron, don't they?
Any other questions on the wires? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Dennis, seconded by Greg. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. We shall move on to the report of the superintendent. Joe?
Thank you. I'll just start by kicking it off back over to Ron if anyone has any questions on the fund activity statement.
No? Okay.
So one thing I did want to mention, you know, with the, with the budget that just came out, we're going to be going through the numbers and modeling out the, how the years, you know, how we project the year's going to turn out for, you know, this year, to see if there's any way we can possibly, ARPAS, which is expiring at the end of this year, can actually be, you know, it's a little complicated to explain, but it actually expires in September of 2024. So if there's any way we can utilize any of those funds by not having ARPAS hit the budget this year, we're exploring that. It's, it's early on, you know, but we're going to try and model out how, how different accounts are going to run for the year.
That's for this year?
For this year.
Okay, fair enough.
Thanks, Ron. I just had a couple of quick things. Number one, the state of Connecticut opened up a grant opportunity directly to teachers this, this year, using approximately $4 million in ARPAS funds designated to the state. They used the Donors Choose platform for teachers to put in requests for up to $1,000, but teachers had to apply for the grants individually, it wasn't, you know, schools couldn't do it. Actually, individual teachers did, and I just, I'm just really proud of our teachers. We had 30, 34 teachers who were approved of grants across all levels in our district, elementary school, middle school, high school. We received approximately over $30,000 in supplies, equipment, furniture, flexible seating, books, instruments, manipulative technologies, you name it, to supplement the work we do every day. Actually, if you walked into the library today, you saw like some new chairs, Megan Lecco had put in for some flexible seating, some comfortable seating, so we have a lot of that around the district. So it was a great opportunity, it really speaks to the dedication of our staff to take advantage of these funds while they lasted, which was not long. I mean, you had to put in for these things, I think, in like a day, the funds were gone. So the fact that 34 people, I'm sure we had other people that put in and probably were, you know, day late and a dollar short, but it was really cool. Almost $30,000 in supplies directly to the teachers' classrooms.
They were about $1,000 each, too, right?
You could go up to $1,000. Yes, we had some as always, $250, and then some like close to $1,000.
So good, good job to the staff, thanks for that.
Awesome. And then I just, quick budget update, I know, you know, most of you are probably aware that the first black man will be presenting his budget next Monday at Town Hall. His budget does represent a $1.18 million adjustment to the Board of Ed adopted budget. You know, we've said all along that we anticipated savings in our health insurance premiums, and we still do. Unfortunately, we also know that those savings aren't going to be $1.18 million. We're probably going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $600,000 to $800,000, you know, short of that from, you know, with the $1.18 million. So it's still very early, we have had some preliminary discussions, the cabinet, Central Office Cabinet Team met, met with the principals last week. You know, we're not in any place to make any definitive reductions right now, and as we will do, we will always try to keep, you know, always try to do things the way we've done things historically, which is keep things as far away from kids as possible and try to be as creative as possible with what we do. So we have a long way to go, like Ron said, we want to see where we trend for the rest of this year, if, you know, using ARPAS, it kind of kicks the can down the road to the next year, but if there's some money that's still there that we can use, we'll scrim, save, borrow, beg, steal from whoever, so... Is it possible, and this is going to sound political, but it isn't, is it possible to get all the state mandated unfunded things listed so the Board of Finance and the public understand what we're up against? I have a list, I actually just asked Cave for this the other day. I have a list of, they're not necessarily all unfunded mandates, but...
It was 50 pages, wasn't it?
It's 50 pages of mandates. Only 50.
But the problem is, how do you quantify that in dollars?
Exactly.
They don't, we've asked, Cave does not have a, they would like to do it.
Could we know somehow? I mean, it would probably be like a huge undertaking.
I mean, I'll share it with, I'll share it with you.
I have it too, I have the list.
Do you have it?
Yeah, we've asked Cave for that, they're trying to put a number on it, it's very difficult because the districts are different.
Right, that's what I'm saying, sorry.
You know, but...
But our district, our people, our public has no idea what we're up against, and all they hear is, oh, we're spending. Well, yeah, we are spending, and, you know, but we have a reason to spend. There are some things that we just have zero control over. I think the general public and finance and everybody else need to understand what those are.
Yeah, there needs to be an awareness to that.
No, I think that's a good point, Dennis. I remember a few years ago when we went to, what was it, Dave, the meeting on the Hill where you meet the legislators?
Yeah.
They're not changing anything. No, literally, they told us, it's not going to happen. They don't, they don't listen. They're going to keep rolling out unfunded mandates.
And some of them are, you know...
Got to stop.
I'm sorry, Al. The only one that can stop that isn't us, it's the public. If they're not going to serve us, then we have to do something. We can't, I mean, we understand the task that the town has and what we've been just tasked with, which, God bless you, this, this is a lot of money to cut out of a budget which we knew we had pretty zero, pretty much zero control over. You know, these are contracted situations that we have, so, you know, good luck, you know, I don't know, I mean, I've been going over my head in books and I, I don't have all the data you guys have, but I don't know how we get there, quite honestly. So, you know, it's got to be a dig deep across the board, but the general public, I mean, we just were bludgeoned with Facebook, right? If Facebook rules the day on what's going on with this board, we're in trouble, right? Because everybody thinks we're just spending money nearly, nearly on lawyers and everything else. We need the public to speak out, and we need them to get involved, we need them to come to our meetings, and we need them to go to Town Hall. We need to have the money that we've asked for, or we wouldn't have asked for it, and we need to make sure that we're rendering a great school system. And, you know, we're not going to die by 1,000 slices. We owe the public, we owe the kids a good education, and our teachers a fair work environment.
Absolutely.
And I don't know how you do keep it away from the kids, Joe.
No, I mean, it's, I mean, obviously, some of it's...
Yeah, we have, how many? 375 additional kids, and how are we going to...
And a couple of housing developments knocking at the door?
Yeah. Exactly, I mean, I know.
And when you look at those, you know, the average, as you know, the average we get from the tax on a new home, $8,000 to $10,000, the cost per child, $19,000. So I, I get a little upset when, you know, oh, the new houses, we'll bring in money, no.
You don't have to be a math major to figure this out.
It doesn't work that, that way.
I can reach back out to Cave and see if they have any additional information, and we can try to look at it, but I mean, it's difficult.
Is there a way we could just look at that list?
We can look at it, I'll send it out.
What can be like a task to do, Joe?
Yeah, I'll send it out to everybody.
Even if you pick some big ones and just like put a number, like this is what we spent in '23, '24, or 20, you know, if you go back to last year, this is what we spent on this, like, this is what we spent on this thing, if you have the list.
And some of it is, you know, it goes above and beyond just, you know, what's unfunded. It's also, you know, the, the trainings for professional development, you know, the amount of seizure training added this year, so that's, you know, that's time away from, you know, that's, we only have five professional development days during the school year. So now we're just eating, eating up, you know, more time with, you know, all these additional trainings that they put on, that, you know, do they cost us money? I, I would say yes, you have a bunch of people in there being paid.
Right, the salaries.
They're working on, you know, something that's probably very irrelevant to, you know, what they're doing.
I think Connecticut's the only, one of the only states with the burden of proof law.
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's, that's huge.
That's not going to change.
And I don't know how you put a price tag, I mean...
It's got to be astronomical.
Yeah, but just look at the, the reading programs, a half a million dollars, right? If, if we don't get the waiver, or we did luckily, the HVAC system was $200,000. Yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah, I agree with, what the person said during public participation.
While she was here, while she was here, and we've talked about this, about, you know, having Kim and Mike back to talk about the, the reading program, because I, I'll defer to them when we talk about it, but we should have, we should have a candid discussion about that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Because I get an earful from people...
I do too, Alan.
About Teachers College and what are we doing in Monroe. And, I mean, it's exactly what that person said, and it's kind of embarrassing.
We, we talked about a, a possible workshop on, on some of these issues so that we can understand, you know, like we talked about having the bus company in, about, you know, the right to read, and so that we can get educated on it better and have some people come in.
Could we align, if we are going to do that, if we're going to talk about reading, because I, I would love to have that conversation candidly, like you said, could we ask Jen when we do have that conversation if she could bring us some trending data over time around how many students are requiring reading instruction through an IEP? Are those numbers increasing? I know you said you have a whole bunch of them going up to high school next year still needing, you know, that specific one-to-one reading support, I would love to see if that data aligns with our reading curriculum.
Yeah, but if they're not using a scientifically-based reading program, it's not really a surprise that kids are going to get one-on-one reading.
That's going to cost us more money on the backend through special ed.
So one of the things Dave and I were talking about was maybe even doing it outside of a board, like doing it as like a professional reading thing, or a workshop.
That'd be great, yeah.
No, it's necessarily a workshop, it just seems about getting, is it Kim, our literacy person, to decide on a program? Because there's no way the state's going to approve what we have here.
I don't know. I mean, Representative Curry was just at, just spoke in front of the Chester Board of Ed, I think it was late last week, and there has been, you know, I think there's over, I don't know, I don't know what the number was, the number of districts that are using it, and again, just want to make sure we're talking about the right thing, we're talking about Teachers College, are we talking about the 18, 19 Units of Study or the 2023 Units of Study? And what wasn't measured in the, in the recent right to, and I am not an expert in reading, so I'd be happy to have Kim here and have Kim and Mike talk about this, but what was evaluated in the, in the right-to-read legislation and in the waivers was the, were the 18, 19 Units of Study. And from what I understand, without knowing a whole heck of a lot about the, the new Units of Study, that these were much more enhanced to include phonics and phonemic awareness and all these other components that are all part of the, the science of reading. I think that, at the end of the day, does it address the science of reading, but, you know, that's why I'd like to have Kim here to, we could talk about that, and have, and have the, you know, a candid discussion. If it's a direction we, we decide to move in separately, then we do that.
Speaking of that, if, if the board is interested in doing that, can you all, over the next two weeks, send me your availability to do a executive session for Joe's performance evaluation? We put the new policy in place, we're, we're well over that, so we need to get that done. And if we're interested in a workshop or a PD on this, get me some days that you're, you're available, okay? Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
You asked that on his birthday, really?
I know. Poor Joe.
Poor Joe.
I offered to sing, but...
All right, Joe, anything else?
That was all.
Okay. Any questions for Joe? Any questions for Joe? Other than happy birthday?
Yeah.
Okay. We had to get that in, you know that.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, we'll try to get you out of here, uh, not too long. Alright, we'll move on to unfinished business, policies, second review, possible vote anticipated. I wanna start the discussion, I know there's been some, um, conversation about policy nine-three-two-six-point-one, taping recording of the board meetings, revised policy. I think we're all okay with five-one-one-one students, correct me if I'm wrong, um, but Joe and I were having some further conversations about, you know, taping and recording of board meetings, like our, we have a facility study ad hoc meeting tomorrow, um, and we, we might wanna maybe get a little more definitive. Joe was gonna reach out to FOI. So, Joe, you want to...
Yeah, I, I re, I put a call into the Freedom of Information Commission just to talk about, um, you know, well, you know, I'm nothing against taping, uh, the board meetings. One of the things we just wanna get a little clarity on is, you know, if we decide to have meetings like, uh, like a, an orientation, a board orientation, where we spend a half a day together and do that, or if we do a workshop or something like this, do we wanna have, you know, be asking staff to come out to tape that for hours? It's, it would be an open meeting to people, but we don't necessarily need to have it taped. So, I just put a call into, uh, to the Freedom of Information Commission just to see if they had any, any thoughts on that, if it violates anything, if there's, you know, would we wanna make an exception to, you know, we have, we would, you know, tape all, you know, regular special and, um, emergency meetings, with the exception of, you know, uh, board retreats and professional learning workshops or something like that. So, just to prevent folks from having to come out on those, on those nights and record it, or on a weekend, which we did, when we did a board retreat a couple of years ago, it was on a Saturday, so...
Yeah, when we had Cave come in?
Yeah.
Remember that? Yeah, yeah. So, you know, that has to get posted, so, I guess the...
It gets posted, you get minutes.
Why is it gonna be recorded? I mean, any way we can save money is a plus, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, that's the, that's the discussion and the question, do we wanna approve that policy as written or do we wanna add a sentence except for? Or do we wanna table that one, get the answers from FOI, so we can come back to that?
Table, wait for the answer.
I'll just wait to get the answer.
Jerry?
Yeah.
Looking at policy people, yeah, okay, yeah, Jeff, yeah?
That way it will just be...
Yeah? Alright, you're comfortable with that one? Okay, so, we will table, um, policy nine-three-two-six-point-one until we get further information. Any discussion on five-one-one-one students, admission placement? I know that was very, that was updating, pretty clean.
That was just a canary in the cage.
Okay, so then, can I have a motion to approve policy number five-one-one-one as presented? Jerry, seconded by Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. So, Joe, we'll put that one on, uh, our next agenda.
Okay.
Alright. Uh, new business, review of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six proposed school calendars for approval. Joe?
Sure, um, and Sheila, feel free to jump in here too. I wanna thank Sheila for putting the calendar committee together, Christine for being on the calendar committee, Kathy Giudano, who was here, was our parent rep, we had Sue was on it, we had all of our, um, representatives from each of our bargaining units, with the exception of one, I forget, the librarians. The librarians. Um, so, in order to give parents, you know, hopefully this will help parents, because what we've done and what the committee did was look at calendars for the next two school years, next school year and the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and you'll see they both look pretty similar. If you, it's kinda hard if you're looking at them on a computer, but if you look at them side by side, they're very similar. They both start with three days of professional development, which was a change from this past year, this past year we did two. Now, on the PD days to start the year, one day is convocation, um, there's meetings and then, uh, there's union meetings and then there's a faculty meeting at each school, which really only leaves one day of professional development before school, and I think a lot of the teachers thought that that was a lot, it was, a lot of the staff, administrators as well, thought that was a lot. A quick turnaround to go from just two days and then, you know, not being fully, you know, fully ready for kids. So, we added the third day of the PD, which is very similar to what we've done in the past. You'll see we did the, uh, two half-days, which we did last year, and that was kind of in response to the heat that we'd experienced for, uh, a few years. So, although, of course, last year it was like seventy degrees on those first couple of days and then it became like ninety the next week and I think we had neuro release day on one of those days, but, um, but trying to be cognizant of that, you know, it's more likely than not that if we have heat, it'll be, you know, it'll be at the end of the summer there, more so than in early September. You'll see the, um, both of them, uh, next year, October eleventh, the following year, October tenth, is a early release day for students for professional development. And that is to give our teachers a chance to analyze their student data, to, uh, prepare for their goal-setting meetings with their administrators, which usually happens around the second or third week of March. The, um, both years have half-days before Thanksgiving, you'll notice an extra-long winter break on both years. One, uh, next year, the twenty-third is a Monday, so it was kinda silly to come into school for a half-day on Monday and then be out on the twenty-fourth. So, we, uh, we decided to make the twenty-third the day off, so it's kind of elongated on the front end. And then the next year, the first is on a Thursday, so the kids would come back on, you know, January first, they'd come back on January second, which would be a Friday, which is kinda silly. So, we elongated it on, on that side. Um, we use the regional calendar next year to, um, to determine our April break. That hopefully puts us in alignment with other districts around us, so if we have, you know, teachers or staff who, you know, work here but live in another town, hopefully they have the same break and vice versa. People that have kids here that might work in other towns, um, I know that was a problem for some folks because Trumbull had an off-break compared to a lot of other districts this year. And so, the, uh, we're not aligned with them, so any of our parents that work in Trumbull with kids in Monroe, they have different breaks this year. I think that is it. You'll see, um, we get out, we're anticipated to get out June eleventh and June twelfth over the next two years, although there is a bit of a difference here, because the eleventh is, falls on a Wednesday next year and the twelfth falls on a Friday, so, you know, one day and we're into the, uh, into the next week. We did not, I just, I just wanna be clear about this, we did not mark, um, Juneteenth as a holiday and a lot of that was agreed on, the fact that the state says you can have it as a holiday or you can have it as long as you do programming around Juneteenth. I think it's way more valuable for our kids to be exposed to what Juneteenth means and programming around it, similar to the way we do Veterans Day now. Like, for years, we had Veterans Day and kids, you know, rode their bicycles to the park and played basketball and had no idea what Veterans Day was about, as opposed to now, where we have, you know, veterans come in and, um, you know, talk about their experiences in the, in the service. So, I thought that was a much better use of time, especially at the end of June, so...
But that only hit if we get excessive snow days.
And that's if we get excessive snow days, yeah. Yeah, that would be like, um...
A week worth of...
Seven snow days next year and, um, five the year after. Yep.
We actually had some questions and parents email us about, about this, so we, we wanna get this on the agenda and also, um, we do have in mind, because we've also had some questions about MASC graduation dates, so, uh, we'll get that on a, on an agenda soon as we can. Alright, Steve?
Yeah, I, I figured we would, uh, I figured the next meeting will put, I think, I think historically what we've been doing is the MASC graduation on the first meeting in March, so...
Yeah. Then we'll keep our fingers crossed with snow.
Was there any conversation about, oh, sorry? Oh, I just had a quick question.
No, Chrissy, yeah, go ahead.
Do you want me to mute the microphone? There are a lot of the Fairfield County districts this year and next year go phasing back into a February break. Was there any conversation about that? Not that I, I'm not, I don't have a care either way, I was just curious.
The only, yeah, no, it didn't really come up, we talked about just doing the long weekend, actually, one of the sample calendars we had was adding an extra day to that long weekend. If we do the whole week, then we're going out that much later...
I know.
In June, which is...
I like being done early, but I just didn't know if we needed to align, it seems like they're all moving back to that.
We also have contractual days too that we have to keep in mind, right, with the calendar, yeah?
Correct.
Who, I know Westport does February break.
Westport, Greenwich, Darien, who was, was off, New Canaan.
Yeah, a lot of this...
And then Nor, next year, a bunch are adding, yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
A lot of times, I mean...
Stanford was off this week.
Historically, the coastal towns don't get, like the ones on the shore don't usually get as many snow days, although the past few storms have been southerly, actually.
Greenwich and Stanford were this week, a couple were last week, and then, I, like I said, I know next year there's a bunch adding.
Yeah.
Just wondering.
Jeff?
Sheila, was there any thought, maybe sneak in a professional delve-o and day, uh, day after the Super Bowl?
We did have, the parent had asked about...
Emotional, emotional.
We had the day after Super Bowl, we also had the day after Halloween, kindergarten teachers would like that day off.
Yep. Need to discuss those days.
Why the Super Bowl's not on a Saturday night, I don't understand, but that's...
Let's go for a later arrival that day.
Little snowstorm. You did a snowstorm.
Yeah, we had it one year. Yeah, I mean, this year, of course, it was the Tuesday after, so...
Anything else on this? Okay, we'll do one at a time. Can I have a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar as presented at tonight's meeting? Dennis, seconded by Christine. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Can I have a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar as presented at tonight's meeting? Greg, seconded by Chrissy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Uh, so, ladies and gentlemen, please get me some dates, uh, availability over the next couple of weeks and Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Stevens, is there a second? Christine, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Good night, everybody.
Night, everybody.